We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Lowe, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
May we all bow our heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for this opportunity again to represent the residents of the City of Lima. We ask that you work with us and through us, that we do a just job, though we realize that it's not about us, but it's all on you. And we do nothing that is not in your permissive will. We ask that you continue to touch our administration and ourselves, and those that regularly attend these meetings, and those at home watching us. We ask that you continue to bless this city and wrap your arms of protection around us. In your son, Christ Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Nieper.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Ms. Townsend.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. I move to add Saul Allen to Reports of Officials regarding leaf pickup.
Second.
The motion in the second is to amend tonight's agenda to add Deputy Director of Public Works, Saul Allen, to the Reports of Officials portion of the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Under privilege of the floor, we have six speakers. I'll remind all speakers that council rules allow for three minutes maximum for comments, and we will start. We need each of you to state your name and address for the record. We will start. First on the list is John Baucher.
Good evening. My name is John Baucher, 2279 West Wayne Street, 45805-2123. So you know where to find me if you don't like what I have to say tonight. First of all, I'm an import from Michigan, and I want to compliment the citizens of Lima and also Allen County for the wonderful hospitality we've been shown since we arrived here on June 1st. And as a mental health professional for over 35 years, I want to compliment these community mental health and recovery services in this community, and also the Coleman Mental Health Services Group. My county, Oakland County, has 1.2 million people. I sat on our Board of Directors up there for 13 years and administered a $312 million budget. I will say, I am jealous of what you have down here, because you've got some of the best cutting-edge activities and protocols to address the mentally ill, developmentally disabled, and those with substance abuse in your area. So you are to be complimented as a city council and those who are in the government of Allen County. However, we still have work to do. A significant number of job applicants in this area cannot pass the drug tests. We cannot complain about unemployment in certain segments of our community unless we address the drug issue. I think we need to start in the elementary schools and start telling kids that they could ruin their future by being cool and smoking pot. That message needs to come from faces in the community who are respected. Maybe we can get some athletes, some entertainers, some political people, people to come in there and let the kids know that bad choices have very bad consequences for their future. And at the very tail end, I'd like to say, please, I've already cast my ballot for the mental health levy. I think it's the best investment you could make. And please, if you will, continue your support for Union Square. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize for mispronouncing your name, Mr. Baucher.
That's all right. I didn't know you got me a parking place with my full name.
Next on the list is Dan, and I'm going to ask you to pronounce your name so I don't
mess it up.
That would have been two for two. Good evening. Dan Ferelia, 505 Morning Glory Drive in Wayne's Field, Ohio, 45896. I also extend my appreciation for the opportunity here, obviously, to discuss a little bit about Union Square. I'm an employee of Coleman Behavioral Health. And just to want to say thank you. I wasn't in the initial meetings for Coleman. I'm the Director of Residential Services. And with that being said, we're very excited that we're able to move forward with this opportunity for those with mental illness, addiction, and disabilities. So it's very exciting. As a permanent supportive housing project, we now have about 60, 65 residents in this area, in Lima, now that we're providing supportive housing to. It's very evidence-based. It's very progressive in somebody's treatment. So we're extremely excited to get additional units in addition to that, a brand-new, brand-new, beautiful, safe, affordable, permanent building coming to the downtown area. I know we have some clients that are already chomping at the bit, when can I apply, and so on and so forth. And as we move forward, we just continue to tell them, keep doing what you're doing, maintain treatment. Proximity of the project is very important. It's downtown, it's within services. There's many opportunities for these folks to continue, have a beautiful place to live, become increasing more productive members of society. The last thing I want to say is that we're looking forward to, with this project, continuing to grow that number of units, as was previously mentioned, so that folks have the opportunity to have somewhere nice to live, have somewhere nice to call home, and have that support, whether it be minimal or maximal, to make sure that they're able to wake up every day, feel good about themselves, battle the addiction they are, provide for their loved ones and the community. With that, I thank you and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tammy Cologne.
I guess I'm here really to give you a face that you can hold accountable for the project. I am the Director of Coleman Professional Services. But I am a citizen of Lima, and I have been working mental health services for 24 years, very committed and very passionate, and glad that someone from outside recognizes the hard work that goes into trying to serve some of our vulnerable community members. I have a vested interest in making sure that not only are our consumers served, but that our community is served. And Coleman has an extensive history of operating housing, managing facilities, and at the same time of taking care of people. And so I wanted to assure you that we take honor in the opportunity, and I'm grateful that the City of Lima supported our opportunity to purchase land. But we take significant responsibility for that building. We want it to be here years past us. We want it to speak to the spirit that we know Lima has, and we want it to be proud to know of who it serves. So should that not happen, you can call me. But again, thank you for allowing us a year and a half ago to have the option to purchase the land, and thank you for your continued consideration to allow us to do so.
Thank you. Next is Mike Shane Hoffer.
Hi, Shane Hoffer, 1866 Wendell Avenue. Thanks very much for giving us a chance to talk about this. Again, it's, I think it's going to be a beautiful place. You know, the way we think about it is that everybody deserves a nice place to live, and this is going to be a great place for people in our community. You know, we served over 10,000 people in Allen County last year, 8,000 in our crisis center. I know we all have an image of what somebody looks like with mental illness, but if I asked you, what's somebody look like who has diabetes or high blood pressure? Well, it looks like me and you. It looks like we do. People with mental illness aren't any different than we are, and they deserve a great place to live. And more and more people are getting jobs and living independently in a way that we couldn't have imagined when we were young and growing up. So thanks for considering this. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tricia Smith. Did I say that right?
Hello. Tricia Smith, 125 West Circular, Lima, 45804. Hello, my name is Tricia Smith. I'm 29 years old. I have two small children. I've been a client of Coleman Professionals for quite some time. This past year, I've struggled with domestic violence, drug, and housing issues. My children were taken and put into foster care in April due to domestic violence. I stayed at Crossroads Domestic Violence Shelter, not knowing where I was going to live after 30 days. I became depressed and checked myself into the We Care Crisis Center. While there, I got back on my medication for my mental illness. Also, I was put on the Suboxone program. Up on discharge from the crisis unit, I went back to Crossroads and began working a program. I wanted a new life, so I began changing it. Then a short while later, Coleman moved me into their supported housing program. So I could get back on my feet. They have helped me maintain counseling and medication. Without the housing program, I would probably be homeless. I know that the housing project would be very beneficial to others that may be in a situation similar to mine. Coleman has made it affordable both when I was employed and unemployed. When I moved in, it was a clean environment. I maintain cleaning and upkeep. Also, there is staff there that is available to help maintain everyday living needs and provide support when needed. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kim Alberta.
Good evening, each and every one of you. My name is Kimberly Alberta. I live at 709 McKenzie Drive. My name is Kimberly Alberta, and I suffer from severe depression and anxiety, in which I also have high blood pressure since 2007. I am one of the homeless individuals, and I stay in one of the home women's shelters that Coleman Behavioral and Mental Health has available. If it weren't for changes for Coleman Behavioral and Mental Health, where would I be today? Coleman has a lot of programs to offer these clients, and like myself, I'm entirely thankful. I'm also a volunteer and also a facilitator at Change in Seasons at the Y Annex Building and on West Spring Street and the corner at the basement, which helps the mental health in the homeless like me, myself, for goal-setting and also self-improvement of yourself, because I'm living proof. The reason I'm here today and now, I'm talking about the building and the new complexes for our clients in our community, is just very, very, and very important. And I want to thank you for listening to us and listening on behalf of Coleman Behavioral and Mental Health.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that items B and C on the consent calendar be received and filed, and item A be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and receive, file, approve item A, and to receive and file items B and C. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to purchase property at 213 East Wayne Street.
Mr. President. Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication Number One be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number One. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to enter into an option to purchase real estate with Testa Enterprises.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number Two be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From Chief Heffner regarding the renumbering of Fire Station Six as Fire Station Number Two.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication Number Three received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation for a change in the strength ordinance.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication Number Four received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number Five be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to amend the contract with Brenneman Excavating.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Communication Number Six be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Convention and Visitors Bureau regarding their agreement for 2014.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Communication Number Seven be received and filed, and the Law Director authorized to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Seven, and to authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Under Reports of Officials, Mr. Saul Allen.
Mr. President. Councilmembers, first of all, I just want to make sure everyone get their handout. Do you need one, Tony? It's that time of year, the City of Lima Public Works Department would like to announce that the leaf pickup program for this year will begin, is scheduled to begin the week of November 11th, 2013. It's three weeks from today. Residents of the First, Fourth, and Fifth Wards will be asked at that time to rake and pile leaves to the curb lawn, not in the street, not in the street, not in the street, not in the street.
That would be the area where there's no grass.
Pickup in the Second, Third, Sixth, and Seventh Wards will occur as crews progress. I will be doing the mayor's press conference to give updates as far as how we're going. Residents are required, are asked to follow a few simple hints. Anyone that doesn't want to wait can pick up bags at this time. Bags are available. They can be picked up at my office, 900 South Collat, and they also can be picked up at the Building and Collection Office located at 424 North Central Avenue, and just bag those leaves, and they can be put up on your normal trash pickup day. Once again, we're asking all residents, when they're asked, to rake all leaves to the curb lawn, not in the street, not in the street, please not in the street. Our crews have the equipment to rake them from the curb lawns. Also, make sure all piles of leaves are free of rock, grass clipping, junk, limbs. This is not limb pickup, this is leaf pickup. If we are there and pick up leaves, and there are a lot of limbs in your leaves, we will bypass those leaves. So if you're wondering, you know, why didn't my leaves get picked up? If you have limbs in those leaves, the equipment we're using are for leaves only. Also, prior to the start of pickup, if you do have large limbs, those can be taken to the Lima Compost Facility at 1227 East Hanthorn Road. Residents will need to bring their water bill along with them to access the compost facility. As usual, we'll try to do at least, we'll try to do two pickups, and that's usually weather-dependent as always. Usually what we try to do is get the first round done before Thanksgiving and start the second round therefore after, right after Thanksgiving. But like I said, if we start to get the S-word, which is snow, the trucks that we use for leaves are the same trucks that we use to do snow removal, so we'll move into snow removal steps. Any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I've just got a couple things. First of all, I want to let every city council know, and I want to thank our utility department, our financial people that handle all our finances, because some city does not get this privilege. They got cut this program, and it's kind of glad that we always keep this program going. And like I tell the folks in my ward, it's not a second-time pickup, so let's get it out there, let's get it done, because this affect our sewer line when the leaves go in that sewer and build up a lot of water, and we talk about this every year. But we are glad that we get to do this, and I've been around a lot of different cities the last couple of weeks, and they cut this program all the way out because of budget strengths. But our city of Lima, Ohio, continue doing it, and I appreciate you guys for fixing the budget and making it happen for our constituents to bring our stuff out. You don't have to pay, people paying for leaves to get picked up. At the yard, we don't have to pay for it, but you go around one time, and we have to remind the folks sometime, they say, well, I thought it was the fifth ward. No, it is the fifth ward, and the schedule won't come out, like you say, you have it out there, so everybody can know that, that we can get these leaves up, you know, a couple of days, leave the leaves out there during the wintertime, when it's snowmelt, it don't look that good. So let's try to get them done, and I appreciate you guys too for keeping this budget there, that we can do this.
And just to add on a little bit to what he said, you know, one thing that I've started noticing, being in this job for a little over 10 years now, is that people are doing a lot of bagging, which has helped us to speed along and get things done a lot quicker than what we used to do. It used to be probably the first round, it used to be like a three-week process. Now it's down to within two weeks now that we can get through the first round, so just to add on.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Ordinance 19413.
This is the second reading authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Sperry Yon Inc. for junk auto and vehicle enforcement.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 19413 be passed on its second reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 19413 on its second reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe.
No.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
No.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes. Ordinance 19413 has been passed on its second reading by a six to two vote. Ordinance 20513.
Levine Special Assessments for Property Maintenance Code charges on premises in the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 205-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 20513 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
And Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Ordinance 20513 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 20613.
Amending Ordinance 7713.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nieper.
I move that Ordinance Number 20613 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 20613 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
And Mr. McLean.
Yes. Ordinance 20613 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 20713.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to purchase real property located at 213 East Wayne Street, Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Ordinance 20713 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 20713 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
And Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Ordinance 20713 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 20813.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Testa Enterprises, Inc. for the sale of land located on South Union Street, East Elm Street in the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 208-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 20813 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes, I've got a couple things to say about it. Had opportunity to talk to some of the folks in the area there, and they was very excited about it, you know, like to see, because they've seen that lot there so long. And some people have, some mental health folks in their family, and they were like, that's great that they have a facility, a nice facility to go to. And you have some questions about other things, too. But I made, I gave them confidence to know that we will, they will continue to have the security there, like we had said in the meeting. You guys will make sure it upkeep, stay there long-term, and they was excited about it. And I was glad, and you're not going to make everybody happy, and they just want to just watch, and you guys have been doing a good job, you know, with me being living next door to it, coming for years and working in the prison system, and I never had a problem with nobody come around there, you know, doing different things. But I'm excited about this project, and it's a great project for mental health, you know, and all the kind words you guys say, and all of them are true, you know, because I get to see, working on RT unit, in the mental health unit at the prison, I'm the caseworker there. So I get to see them guys, what they go through, you know, and when trying to find placement for them. That's the toughest job it can be, you know, but I understand it, though, and hopefully that the people in the area, the ones that didn't buy into it, that will buy into it, but they just want to wait and see that everything continue going, like I was saying here at the meeting tonight, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Nieper.
Yes.
And Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Ordinance 20813 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Under miscellaneous business, Mr. Lowe. Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Mr. Tevin.
Nothing this evening.
Oh, thank you. Tevin, Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Three minutes.
Have a couple things. One is a reminder for absentee voting. You can go to the Allen County Board of Elections from now until 6:00 PM on Friday, November 1st, before the election. Their normal hours are from 8:30 in the morning till 4:30. So again, that's absentee voting. Encourage everyone to exercise that privilege. Also, a reminder of Make a Difference Day that's coming up on the 26th. I just encourage you to contact your neighborhood association to see what they may have planned. I personally know of Midway East is having a cleanup. They're hoping to do an alley or two, and they're going to have a dumpster. And at the end of the time, I believe it's from 9:00 to 1:00, they're going to have their annual chili cook-off. So please stop by. And if I could, Mr. President, I'd like to ask Major Protsman to come up.
One will be from 9:00 AM till noon, which will be held at Allen County Children's Services, which is 123 West Spring Street. The four other ones will be from 9:00 AM to 11:00. They will be at Chief Supermarkets. There'll be two locations, one at 890 South Cable Road, the other one will be at 1200 West Northern Avenue. There will be one at LMH Medical Park, 525 Northeast Town Road, and the other one will be at Kmart, 2250 Harding Highway. We do ask when people bring in their medications that they try to keep them in the original container or prescription bottles, and then also that they blacken out the name of the patients. This is a good opportunity for the community, one for environmental reasons. It's been discussed before about how it used to be of pouring medications down the toilet. I did hear that makes some people upset when they do that, so we're asking that they not do that anymore. They bring it in and let us dispose of it properly. It's also a safety concern for the addiction that we know of now for prescription medications, and this is a good way of keeping it out of the hands of people who shouldn't have it.
Thank you, Major. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I'm going to take, we'll take everybody minutes. But first of all, I want to thank the mayor, gave a proclamation. We had a big star in town yesterday, Vicki Winder, and Mr. Lowe stepped into place for Mayor Berger and read the proclamation out. She was very excited about that, and she was very excited by our city, too. So we want to thank you guys for doing that yesterday when Vicki Winder came in, and she's one of the top stars in the United States Gospel singer. Appreciate all that. Also, like Ms. Adams said, Make a Difference Day coming. And I always say Make a Difference Day is every day in the sixth ward. We hoping that we can keep it like that. We got a lot of projects going, be going on. We hope to get a couple of them, and it's supposed to be snow coming in, so we hope that the snow can hold off a little bit. And, you know, Halloween is coming around, and the key is, our date is the 31st, because they keep asking me, and I was, Mr. President, we made that the 31st trick or treat.
Rick Stahle made it the 31st.
I mean, Mr. Stahle, 31st, okay.
And announced it at the last meeting.
Yeah. Some people saying, wow, it's 31st. I said, yeah, it's 31st, because we used to have a day before that.
Last Thursday of the month.
Okay. So some of the calling.
From 6:00 to 8:00.
6:00 to 8:00, got it down back there. But I appreciate everybody for.
What kind of candy are you giving out?
Well, we give our certificates.
Oh. No one's going to your house.
McDonald's certificates?
Change the whole calendar to put it on the 31st, and what do you do?
But most people like candy there. But, yeah, but that's what we, you know, 31st. Also, I want to bring up a couple things that people have called about, is that they called about grass cutting, but our grass season is over with right now. We don't start back up till next year, and they closed out a couple months ago.